A little bit late tonight, so we'll go ahead and get started. Kevin here to pull some work out.
Dear Lord, we thank you Father for this day, we thank you for the blessings of life you've given us, Lord, we thank you for being so very good to us. Father, I pray that you just be with us tonight as we conduct the business of our town, Lord, help us to make right judgments, help us to be the men and women you'd have us to be, may we put the people's interest at first and foremost, Lord. And Father, just lead us and guide us and direct us, and Lord, just forgive us where we sin and where we fail you, in Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pray with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, need a motion to call the meeting to order.
Motion.
Kevin, second. Kevin, second.
Kevin.
Kevin. Item number two, need a motion and a second to cover only what's on the agenda. Eugene, second. Item number three, reading of the minutes.
The Hackworth Town Council met in regular session on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. A motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to call the meeting to order. Kevin Marlowe led everyone in prayer and then the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Coburn stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. Dear, uh, excuse me. The mayor and council discussed back, a backhoe and needed, and the need for a new one. Last year, the gears were replaced, which was in the five to six thousand dollar range. Recently, the other side has went out and the hydraulic pump is about to go out as well. The mayor asked the council members if they wanted to put more money into this backhoe or purchase another one. For Chad Hudson, who works for a street department, the machine is worn out and other things are beginning to need repair. Mayor Coburn asked, has been in contact with Andy Lane, who has a backhoe for sale. It is the two thousand ten John Deere and he's asking thirty-nine thousand dollars for it. Mister Lane would also consider a trade for the Massey and possibly the old backhoe. The council members were in favor of purchasing a backhoe, but wanted to table this until the next meeting for the mayor to get prices for Mister Lane. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to table until the next meeting. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The opening of the swimming pool was discussed. The lifeguard jobs need to be posted as well as an adult supervisor. Take applications until Monday, May thirteenth, then hire them in the meeting that evening. This will give them three weeks to get certified. The lifeguard pay will be seven twenty-five per hour and the supervisor will be eight dollars an hour. The pool will open on June first and will close August third. The hours of operation will be seven days a week from five, one to five in the afternoon. All parties will be from six to eight in the evening and will cost one hundred dollars, fifty for the town and twenty-five for each lifeguard. A motion was made by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to adopt these hours and rates of pay. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. The mayor and council discussed the Denson Building and vehicles on the property beside Sweet Peas. Mister Denson and his son had a contractor come and look at this building. They intend to put a new roof, replace windows, and do some other repairs so that it can be rented. The owner of the property next to Sweet Peas assured Mayor Coburn that the vehicles will be removed before Neighbor Day. Curbside pickup was discussed by the mayor and council. The Mac Frederick property has been cleaned, but they placed the piles next to the road. The owners need to be contacted and told it is their responsibility to remove. The Browns property across the street has been done the same way. The owners are responsible for removal. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to have the street department haul away what they can and have the owners remove the rest. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. Neighbor Day was discussed. The mayor urged everyone to pitch in and help with getting ready for vendors. Everything should be in place by Friday morning. The weather looks like it will be great and we hope to have a good crowd. The gravel and grade list was discussed. The names on the list are Jimmy Abels, Will Gerald, Ray Hudson, and Peter Latrell. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Marlowe to gravel and grade state drives. Voting was as follows, all A's, no N's. There being no further business to come before the council. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to adjourn.
Y'all heard the reading of the minutes? Any questions or comments? Yeah, well, I don't want to ask about the backhoe, let's see if it's on the list. The only thing on the pool that we didn't go over is gonna be the daily charge. We're gonna stay at two dollars. Everybody good for that? Anybody applied yet for them to join this pool?
Did you bring those?
I didn't bring them out.
Okay, I know their names.
Yeah, I think they're all applicable.
On that, if we get whatever we could off of them, two curbside things.
We have, yeah.
If it was longer or no, violated, maybe it's one of them.
No? Yeah, till we get the backhoe, we can.
Okay, I got, yeah, 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 we've got gravel.
All right. Anything else? Need a motion to pass the minutes, so. David, is that? Second. Can we? We've been a while, we, we gotta accept, need a motion to accept the minutes. 第二个 Second.
Second.
And Don and Tabby will have to abstain.
Second.
What'd she say?
You have to abstain.
I'm already abstaining, where's she been?
She's asleep over there.
She's not asleep.
You felt halfway all over, you didn't hear us abstain?
I didn't hear it.
I didn't hear it.
You didn't hear that?
Kevin didn't hear me, he's closer than I am.
Yeah, he did, I worked the song when I was working.
I don't know why the mayor didn't woke him up. Item number four, paying the bills.
Okay, you've got one check register, that's checks that have been written during the month or since the last meeting and then there is one that they haven't been written yet. Darrell and I decided to go ahead and take what we could last week and, uh, because it's mostly the regular bills.
I couldn't find it, but I, I know during our last term, like power bill, gas bill, we know those have to be paid and we can discuss them when we come in here.
Yes.
But I think we need to give Carla the ability to pay those when they're due without us voting to be paid. Y'all agree with that? All bills that are monthly that we have to destroy and pay them.
Y'all go through, uh, some of the ones that, you might have questions on the check register. Span Hardware, that's the new lawnmower. Eighty-eight seventy-five seventy-five. And the Homes Two Suites, that's the academy, when Adam was at the academy, that was his weekly stay.
Adam was born time, right?
Yeah.
Didn't know. What did Maggie say? Portopodis.
Portopodis from Neighbor Day.
Yes, back was the common.
Common.
Couple of these we did go over in the last meeting right at the end. Was real, that'd be done for Carla again. Oh, did we, Carol told that road? Yes. Got all of it? Actually, as well, you got a check register there, oh, some.
And then second page, of course, there's an Amazon and a Walmart and that is some supplies that Chief Marbit ordered.
Yes, the suite, I guess that was for the bill.
Homes Two Suites, that was the, that was the, uh, hotel stays for Adam. Wexbank, horses, the gas.
His lawnmower belts.
And in your folder, you have a listing of the fuel bill in IEC as well as, uh, the insurance up here, the state employees, uh, insurance forty-nine hundred seventeen. And it just lists out the employees who are on the insurance and it's in there for you to see as well. In the Magria, I'm sorry.
Yes, we're seeing.
The Magria tire and service is, um.
That's actually not tractor.
That is the police car.
Yes. Where we lot, bigger bill on the tractors. I wish that was. Oh, add on.
And we've paid. The Magria. That's the, to come off.
It's an R, yes, I guess that's taxed on, that already we have to pay.
That's our monthly, it comes through the bank statement each week.
Haven't called him, what was that for my trophies? Yeah.
You see the, the entertainment on the back page as well is, um, for Neighbor Day and there was a couple more that we wrote this week that's not listed here that we had to. Chad Mitchell completed the, um.
Drainage.
Drainage and we pay him the fifteen hundred. And also Millennium Risk, which is our work comp. The bill was due only at twenty-three thousand five eighty-eight.
It's actually coming down to about thirty-three. You're calling?
No, just calling.
What's an alibi for transportation? What was that? Something like that. Outlaw.
That comes through, let's see. That's something that comes through the bank statement that the, the taxes never let. It's Department of Revenue.
State tax. Okay. Yeah.
It's not outlawed.
Well, that's what, yeah. Get out of it, that's important, I thought.
A door. Oh, and the little fella that designed the T-shirt, um, he was asking, where's my popsicle party? So we got to get with him and do that little popsicle party this week.
Get it planned if anybody's off. We'll go over and party with him.
Middle of the month.
I think he's fifth or, fifth grant he's got.
Party with Pittsburgh.
They don't even drink beer yet.
I hope not.
My goodness.
They eat popsicles though.
They like popsicles.
All right, need a motion to pay the bills.
So move.
Everybody's looked over. Don, second.
Wait a minute, I have to abstain, no?
No, not on behalf of that.
No, don't.
Need a second. Second. Darren.
I'm seconding it.
Yeah, item number two. Everybody. Item number five, financial statement. Carla, the money in the general fund, we've paid all these bills out of them and did you say you had deducted the twenty-three for Millennium Risk? Yeah, okay. Well, that's a good check.
And if you notice on occupational, I have not transferred that money either. One forty.
What's the difference between the rental income admin versus recreational? We just have basically one rental income down on any of our facilities.
Well, the, the reason it says recreation is, uh, if they rented the pool. And the senior building.
Senior building.
The senior building is, we choose, we show it as admin.
Okay.
And the gym or the pool would be recreation, that's just the account that it goes to.
So where does our revenue at for rental properties? Is that on the?
Well.
Rental income. Except for Stollman.
That's what it is.
Rental income.
Is it rental income admin?
That's, um.
But you said that was the.
That's what we, where we put the, um, the senior building rental, um.
Tire rental station.
I'm talking about where's the, where's that going at?
Uh, we've got to bill them for that and then I've got to.
How would we bill them?
Well, we gotta figure out the power bill, everyone's over.
Yeah, but he's been in there since January, so we hadn't billed him yet since January?
Well, he's been moving in, but he hasn't really been going, been on.
Well, that's later, okay.
I've done copies of the power bills.
I mean, we're, we're gonna bill him what we agreed to. And recreation, I will just be what it says, gym or the pool or whatever.
It'd be the gym or the pool, yeah.
We're kinda getting, uh, getting close on time and we're wide open bush hogging, patching roads, we're all rested and having Jamie get the pool ready. Not revamping it, just getting it ready.
You got a, I mean, early estimate.
Unless some of y'all have time to go down there, I mean, our guys are gonna be tied up.
You, you got like a rough estimate, whatever you're on charge or just whatever.
No, we're trying to call him today, I'll get a number, but, I mean, it shouldn't be that much.
Just cleaning it like it's not getting up and going and.
Draining it, cleaning it a little bit. I only paid a hundred last year, wasn't it? Two thousand dollars or something. Way over. I, I can't remember, but last year you done a lot more too.
Yeah, I don't think it, I tried to call him again and I didn't get an answer.
What are you gonna do if he's not available and does not wanna do it, what's your backup plan?
Just have to pull off, bush hogging and.
Maybe talk to Greg and maybe them, Mike can help, 'cause he knows how to set it up.
I mean, they, they will, I suppose. He's, uh, saying.
Easy.
We've been doing some work at it, you know, not at John.
Evan.
Evan, who?
Brandon Stewart.
Right in the, is that top ten in the line?
And some more work, quite a day of work.
I mean, I'm open, I just wanna get it up and run it, I wanna get cool, strapped to the limit.
I've got, I don't got that.
We were gonna rent it on the third.
They don't have no, near as much as nothing, it's gotta have done to it.
It's just gotta be.
It's gonna be cleaned.
Yeah, already cleaned and ready.
Did we ever get these doors fixed and?
They came up here and the guy looked at them and said he couldn't fix them, but he was getting to the company that could.
I was looking at the capital, city capital improvement.
Yeah, or.
And we've been trying to get them fixed for two years.
They should be back, yeah. Yeah, they need to be. As a safety measure. What is this wellness participation, Carla?
Where's the town? Oh, I'm sorry, I was still looking. I just said I made y'all a copy to see who had insurance, it's just the billing because it was on there for forty-nine seventeen and I thought y'all might ask about it, so.
You knew I would, didn't you?
It just lists who has the insurance, I thought that y'all might, we'll check, make sure I was, did it right.
Better be, well, are you?
Go ahead.
You ain't got mail, man.
Well, you don't have this kind of insurance.
Well, the members want the company to explain, you don't try to get me insurance, why?
Well.
She's coming up here looking for you.
Um, and also ActLAC. Um, ActLAC has sent some stuff and I need to give y'all a copy of it in case you're interested. And also the Wexbank, I had, um, gave you a copy of that as the fuel, um, this month was eleven hundred thirty-seven fifty-five. Um, of course, three quarters of that is the PD and, um, some street, some fire department. I've got it all broken down, um, I need to do some work on that and give them some new cards and stuff, you know, at that company and get it, um. Some changes made.
I guess that on the side is Park Hammer.
I'm sorry?
You know, Hackworth PD, Hackworth Fire Department, that is on the side.
Yeah, um, some of that is, um. Those unassigned, I don't know why they're showing that, I'm gonna have to call them on that because that's the police cars.
Awesome. Some of them are part-time, do you, uh?
Yeah, and mostly some of them are.
We can still turn back to that caller if you.
Yeah, it goes back to the car so you can see where he gets.
It's six oh two four, the caller, yeah. I don't know what you're doing, I'm getting paid for that either, 'cause I ain't got a check yet. Yeah, you need to get Marbit's off there. Marbit's pure, uh, herb is on there.
Oh.
We don't know Marbit to make any kind of.
I don't know if that comes from. Me or the, the company.
It's probably still on the app.
Because I don't normally give them that.
Yeah, I think it better than saying, yeah. The man don't have a tiny's over on that machine. Yeah. He don't know how to do it. Now, we'll send a call. All right. Need a motion to accept the financial statement.
Motion.
Tabby. Second, Kevin. Item number two. All right. Old business.
We've got Tyler here with living water and if we could put him first, I know he don't have to.
Yeah, he don't wanna hear all of it, so. Um, Tyler, we'll leave you up here in a minute, let you go ahead. Tyler McCovey's here to, to address the council on the issues that might occur, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
You go with me now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, members of the council, love to come speak this evening. Um, I've been talking to Greg, uh, giving the water board about a, uh, issue we're seeing at the wastewater plant. Um, over the past, I would say almost a year, maybe six months to a year, we've noticed an increase in what appears to be septic waste coming into your system. Now, we have gone through some efforts to try to figure out where that could be coming from, uh, without getting too technical about it, you have a, you have a closed-loop system, it's very difficult for, uh, septic collar or somebody to be able to discharge into your system because there's no manholes. Everything is low-pressure force main. Um, with that being said, there is some places that we're investigating that there could be a tap, a legal tap put in that can back through the truck too and just put it in your system. Um, the town has incurred some significant costs, uh, with having to pump a lot more sludge that comes out of that plant than it normally does. Due to this septic waste, I think, uh, here recently, uh, y'all just had to, um, approve the pay for some grease treatments, um, like fifteen hundred dollars for the grease treatments to help cut down some of this, uh, because it started to affect some of our year numbers that are reported to the state. Um, in discussing this with Greg, um, I think he checked in, the town does not have any kind of ordinance to help protect the town, uh, such if you found someone dumping into your system, um, where y'all can pose a fine, uh, charge them for remediation, which is the money that you have to spend to incur to clean up this bill at the wastewater plant. And, you know, to help incur to pay us to be able to help clean it up, um, and we would. Um, and we would like to work with y'all in putting together an ordinance, um, as a lot of other towns have had to do that's faced this, to help protect you going forward. Um, now, all this being said, this is strictly, we're guessing that this is happening, but I can tell you, this is not normal residential sewage coming in all the time there. So, it's gotta be coming, if it's dead, as we call it, where it's black coming in, then that's not coming out of somebody's home. Uh, that's coming out of a septic tank, and if it's getting out of a septic tank, it's gotta be injected somewhere. So, to protect the town, we would like to work with the Mr. Mayor and with Greg going forward and, um, helping you put an ordinance together. Now, we have some, some guidelines of that that we've helped do for, uh, the town of Good Hope in Coleman. Also, West Point in Coleman County, as well as Coleman County Schools. They've had some instances where, uh, they have manholes just everywhere. And they actually found a couple sites where septic collars were coming and dumping into those manholes. And they was getting to the plant, all rags, trash, tearing up pumps, three thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars here, man pumps, and they were having to fix. And they set up some cameras if they found some, some lo- some locations that they thought were getting dumped, they actually called a few people. And, um, they have, like the town of Good Hope has an ordinance in place where you best be a restructuring out rule. The first time they catch you, they impose a five hundred dollar fine, uh, off, across the board. Then they have to pay for the remediation to fix what happened. They tore a pump up or whatever, that was five grand, they have to pay for it. Second time, it goes up to ten thousand dollars. And then the third time is, they turn it over to the state, which the state declares that as a class C misdemeanor, which could get to twelve months in jail. And that would be, but the actual state A M, agency and E P A, leave it up to the local municipalities to declare ordinances, to best fit y'all. Because not everyone's the same. If it was a blanket, then it would be a blanket. But the state considers that as criminal littering and the fines are very low. And, uh, I don't think you wanna charge somebody a max of five hundred dollars to tear up a three thousand dollar bill for a company's luggage. So, um, we have some paperwork, Mr. Mayor, that kinda helps guideline some of this out that we did for Good Hope. And I'd like to, uh, be able to email that to you and, and let you kinda see it. And, um, you know, going forward, we would request that y'all adopt something to help protect the town going forward. Uh, at least till we can figure out what's going on.
Tony here is our city attorney.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely, I'd like to.
Send me all, all forward and over to him and make sure, you know, we're all on the same.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, it's, it's worded in such to help, you know, it has a lot of legal mumbo jumbo in there to have them kinda word that.
Right.
So, you have, definitely need to look over that. We would like, like I said, I just wanted to basically come to you and address the council, let you know, we are having a problem. Um, we do not have it narrowed down. Uh, we are doing some ongoing investigation to figure out where this is happening. But when we do find it, and if we do set up a camera, if we do catch somebody, what can the town do to help recoup some money that you've had to spend?
How could, how could they be getting it back in there if we don't have manholes?
This is, it, what, what it is, you have a low-pressure force main, instead of a high-pressure force main. You have pumping stations all throughout the town, individual homes pump into a common force main that goes to the wastewater plant. It's considered low pressure. So, there's different sites throughout the town that has basically air reliefs and gate valves for taps. Okay? Those gate valves and taps, you can take and you can put a two-inch or three-inch or four-inch coupling on it with a gate valve. All they have to do is hook their truck to it, turn their pump in reverse, open that gate valve, and away she goes. It's kinda like a direct injection. If it was high-pressure force main and they did something like that, it would shoot thirty feet in the air. But since it's a low-pressure force main, they can do so. So, identifying that can be very difficult. Um, Greg is on the hunt, I guess you could say, for some areas. He, he, I think he's got the map of the stage one that it was put in. There's some areas he's, has not checked, some of these outlying areas. We know it's not in town. Somebody would see that.
Right.
You know, and report it, but there are some lines that go out, you know, for future developments.
What you're saying, if someone come out with one of the trucks, it cleaned out sewers or something like that around here, they, them getting familiar with the system and everything, they could back up into one of our?
Have it dump ten minutes and gone.
There, there's a couple ways it can occur, if I'm hearing you correctly. One, if somebody's got no system.
That's correct.
The second is if somebody has a septic tank that is cross-tied into the system.
Generally, generally, if a septic tank, let's just say, just can't get to your sewer system, uh, there's really no gravity to it.
No, it's black water rises and goes into it.
That's right, maybe it's flowing, and that'd be clear water. That's not really the issue, but when we're finding big pieces of debris, like big pieces of baby wipes and trash and everything that's supposed to go, go through the grinder pump
Yeah.
and shred it, if you're getting these giant pieces of debris, it's gotta be coming from somewhere.
Right.
You know, so that has to come in.
So, it's not getting put in a basin in a house.
That's right. And, and, and plus the grease, I mean, it, it, you know, and I encourage anybody who wants to go down there to look. It's, it, for, for your town size, you have as much grease as like a huge miss valley would have to deal with. And there is no way that it can create that much. So, I mean, we've been doing this a long time and looking at it, it's not residential.
Yeah, but if we got as much grease as Hamilton does, we might get a restaurant on every corner or something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got, you've got a problem somewhere, so we're investigating it. And it, like, like I said, the, the way it looks coming in, the way the sewer looks coming in, normal sewer, the way it looks is normally a grayish-yellow color before it gets put into off, put into an actual cycle for treatment. Uh, this is coming in yellow to black. So, and, and it may be low-pressure, it can be in there two weeks, sometimes it takes two weeks to actually get up to us, so.
So, it's not going through the process of cleaning then, it's going straight into the stream?
No, 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 that's, it's coming out of the plant.
Coming in the plant.
And it's still getting treated, but it's the, the raw of the stuff that comes in, the stuff that's dead, just to kind of agree, if you don't log, don't log about wastewater. Our human bodies have bacteria inside of us that help break down sewer over time. A hundred years ago, there was no wastewater plants. It was a septic tank or a line running off in the woods. Okay? Go through the process, five years of septic tanks, goes into your filter lines, goes into the groundwater, well water, pick it back up, filtration process, it, it would do it itself. Well, now that you have big population centers and you have wastewater plants, we take, well, it takes five years, old-school way, and turn it into two days. And speed it up. Well, that's living bacteria that we're working with. Well, if you have a septic tank and they pump it and it's mostly sludge, if you've ever looked in, ever looked at your septic tank when it's been pumped, if you have had one, it's black, it's dead, there is nothing alive. So, and that gets introduced into a thing that's living, it's a biological process, and you get something, something dead, it shocks the entire system. It goes, oh, hey, something ain't right. And three thousand gallons of that can really disrupt the process, which then in turn affects the numbers reported to the state, which is not what we want.
Stank tank on the camera.
Yeah.
But it's, it's sell ten, fifteen hundred times more.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It makes it very hard to treat, which incur more chemicals and more time and more, you know, more money for the town, and that's not what we wanna do. You spend something you should have to do. I mean, you, you know, you get paid to, you know, from these people for their, your sewer. And, you know, if they're not, you're getting paid for it, you shouldn't get it treated. So, we wanna help put something in place to at least protect the town. So, if we run into the situation, we find this person, whatever, you know, we can help get you some money back. Have it on the books, cause you don't have, a lot of these towns have, have gravity sewer, have manholes, you could go out and weld manhole shit. Coleman County Schools had to go weld every one of their manhole shit at every one of their schools. Because, and, and the reason for a lot of this that's happening, it's happening a lot. The reason it's happening is because a lot of these municipalities that have lagoons, wastewater plants that will take septic, from septic truck, going way up on their fees. You know, ten years ago, it was a hundred dollars, a hundred and twenty-five dollars to dispose of sewer. Now, it's two fifty, three hundred dollars.
Where do our local folks that, that do this really live in? Do they go to Hamilton?
There's only one person that I have met, and I cannot recall his name, I just met him, uh, last week. It's a gentleman who does the sludge removal for y'all, and he takes us to Hamilton for giving.
Mr. Baggett?
Yeah. And I have no idea how much he's paying, but I know at least down in Birmingham, the fees are astronomical. And then Jefferson County is the only municipality around that will take grease. Everybody else will not take grease. So, trying to dispose of that, you know, is cumbersome.
Well, I just wanna thank you for catching it personally. I've been a council for nearly three years and it, I, I question that because it's not as sophisticated as anything else, but well, you catching that tells me you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, and I appreciate you finding it.
Well, you know, it, it's our job to make sure A M stays away.
Well, I appreciate it, cause you're doing your job.
So, if we, if we see there's a problem, we would like to head it off before it becomes a problem or it starts affecting your water quality. And then A M comes up here and wants to put a fine on you and everything else, so we wanna avoid that. Especially, you know, and, and I don't know if the, the council's aware, but the mayor's aware, we're in the process of a permit renewal right now with the state. Where we're up here, our company's up here twice a week, sampling that plant twice a week for wastewater, and it's ridiculous with the amount of flow that's coming to your plant. So, we requested that they move your sample frequency to twice a month, which would cut us back to once a week. Now, it hurts us, but it's better for y'all, and that's what we're about, relationships, long-term relationships, so we want what's best for the town. So, we're in the process of that, and the last thing we need is any kind of high-flow number that's coming up or variances where we not make a number, not make a permit, and A M goes, well, hey, y'all are asking us to do this, but you're violating. You know, we don't want any of that. So, we want it to be where the town can save money in, in the long run. So, we, we, we just request that, you know, uh, I wanna bring this to you tonight, and we can table this. I'd like to get some information in front of both of y'all to, just for some other previous towns we've done. And, uh, look at adopting an ordinance to help protect you.
I think we need it. May never happen again, may never catch nobody, but if we do, we're ahead of them.
That's right, and you should not have to incur the cost, especially if you catch someone.
Well, first, the amount of grease, I mean, you talked about the black water, which is different, but the amount of grease that you said was coming in there, that means that they're dumping straight oil.
Pretty much.
If they're dumping it from a restaurant, which is illegal.
That's right.
And even from the lunchroom, you forgot the lunchroom too, or from between soup boxes.
Well, now, they got their own system, don't they?
The lunchroom, the lunchroom should have, at this school should have their own grease trap. Now, whether that's being pumped or not, I don't know. I can tell you, and I hope nobody here is affiliated with them, the, uh, grocery store over here that has the little cafe in it. And for a long time, Greg didn't even know if they had a grease trap or not. And last week, or here, we found it. In the, in the parking lot. And, uh, it had never been pumped before. And they popped the top and it was full of grease. I mean, completely full, and it was going into the system. So, I think Greg contacted them to get it cleaned.
Come to an agreement, Mr. Baggett's gonna pump it twice a month, I think, is that?
That's correct.
Sound right?
Yeah, yeah, it was some kind of agreement I was gonna work to get it pumped, uh, to help reduce that amount of grease. Now, that is, that will help with the grease issue. However, that does not explain the septicage that's still coming into the system. Uh, Greg has some theories behind that, um, obviously unproven theories, and, uh, I think he may have discussed some of that with you. Um, and we are exercising to try to figure out where it's coming from, because it's, like I said, the good news is, is you don't have fifty manholes scattered out across the town. That would be hard to contract. There can only be several places where it could be injected, and there will be signs of it. I mean, there will be a little mess, you'd be able to kinda take, and then you can set a camera up to catch it.
The, the grease, once it gets to the treatment plant, kinda comes to the top and would crust over.
Yeah, it's, it's classified as inorganic. Uh, you can't treat it in inorganic. Um, that messes up the process tremendously. And I think, um, Greg had, had Mr. Baggett try to clean some of that off before these grease bugs that y'all just bought were introduced to help kinda cure it. But, uh, you don't wanna get in a situation where you're having to pay fifteen hundred dollars a month to kill grease, so. We're taking some steps to try to help prevent some future problems.
We appreciate that. Y'all have done a good job ever since we.
Well, we, we appreciate the opportunity. We just wanna make sure things keep rocking along. Like I said, our job's to keep A M away. And keep y'all in, you know, compliance.
We don't want our wastewater getting somewhere where it shouldn't go.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, like I said, plus, if somebody's dumping it on you, you should be paid.
And there's no way, there's no way to lock those, where they keep anybody from getting in on them or?
I don't know if those cabinets have locks on them. I can ask Greg about it. Um, I think there's like twenty of them throughout the town. So, I mean, there could be an option to lock them, but I mean, somebody could easily take a bolt cutter and cut in. I mean, we actually, in, in the town of West Point, you know, which is just a little bit to the west of Coleman, coming up one fifty-seven, they actually went as far as to weld their manholes and actually found where somebody's taking a grinder and grinding the oil off. To steal them. If you've ever, if you, you might go to West Point, it's just Jax.
Yeah, I did.
Right there off one fifty-seven. Well, right behind Jax is a manhole, kinda off in the woods, and then septic trucks would pump up there, like they were at Jax and run hose through the woods, dump right there. Messed a lot of pumps up and stuff. They were having to incur the cost, they figured it out. So, thank goodness you don't have a main pumping station that has to pump through, which is, which is a blessing. Uh, because it would probably have messed up a long time ago. But, um, but still, you're, it, it, y'all have to go somewhere. Just wanna bring out to y'all's attention, like I said, we'll be, we'll be working together through, uh, maybe helping do that for you.
We appreciate that time.
Thank, thank y'all, Michelle. Thank y'all for your time.
Yep, sure thing, thank you. So, Tony, when we get that information?
Yeah.
We get it back.
Yeah, we draft an ordinance. Try to pair what they've done in other towns.
Yeah, and like I said, I'll, uh, I'll get that emailed to you and, uh, you can pass it on. If you have any questions, just let me know. Anybody have any more questions, bro? Yeah, it's still a half hour outside.
Chris and Tony, how are you?
Thank you.
We don't even have to respond to that, do they?
Old business, uh, we've talked about the backhoe being down now for a while. Needing to replace it. Let's see, who was here? Italian Dawn?
Yeah.
Which Dawn, you can go over a little bit about it, but, um, Andy Lane, which is a dealer over near Thark Town, he has a John Deere three-ten, I mean, it's, it's basically got everything you want on one and need on one. It's got a cab, uh, four-in-one bucket. Quick attachment, extend a hole, hydraulic thumb in the back. Just anything you would need on a backhoe. It's only got three thousand hours, two thousand and ten model. And I think everybody knows that our backhoe is down, we cannot use it at all. And on this particular backhoe, we can trade with him on our backhoe and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Think we'll give you seven for that one?
Yeah. He started out at five and he came up to seven.
Does not count the tractor, right?
No. No, he, he will take the tractor, but that's another deal we wanna talk about. We don't have it on there, do we, Carl? Anyway.
No. I didn't know you wanted to do that.
He, he would give us ten thousand on the tractor. On the state bid, we could get a new Massey for twenty-six thousand. With front-end loader, um, heavy-duty. Every, everything we need. So, if we traded in the backhoe too and took off another ten thousand, you could look at it like getting a brand new tractor for sixteen.
What's wrong with the tractor?
It's in decent shape. Well, I mean, I ain't necessarily wanting to, I'm just saying now would be a opportunity, we could get a new one for sixteen thousand. Steve, you know anything, I mean, besides just bidding?
It's just a hope. I mean, I don't even remember when they bought that thing.
Oh, we, we can keep it.
I don't remember. Ain't nothing wrong with it, right?
It's got a leak, it's got, you know, and then beaten, banged up, and then it's got a hydraulic leak. I don't know what it's gonna take to fix it. I don't know. Uh, some people say this is gonna have to come from, but I know Eugene looked at it and said one time, he said he thought it was gonna have to come completely apart. Well, if you're gonna do that, you might as well put a clutch, and if you're gonna break it and have it, you might as well fix everything while you're in there.
Is ten thousand dollars more than what it would be worth, or is that as much as it'd be worth?
I don't think it would be worth much more than that.
Compared, well, I, I just wanna ask, I guess, is like, the tractor we have now compared to what we could get, how much more work could we do with that, or as far as, uh, the, any more, uh, does it have any more, uh, I guess gadgets? I, I mean, I ain't that familiar with tractors, so I'm just saying like. We already got a brand new, almost a brand new.
Not necessarily any more gadgets or do anything else. We just have, I mean, we would be good for fifteen, twenty years on a tractor. Not necessarily any more gadgets or do anything else, we just have, I mean, we would be good for fifteen, twenty years on a tractor.
I, when you were saying though, something about it came, or, or what old?
Well, it's got a front-end loader, which we have now. It's heavy-duty. No.
No, the Kubota, this is a Massey, didn't you say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Massey's older than.
The Massey's, the Kubota's a newer tractor, yeah.
Kubota's are about eight, nine years old, that Massey's fifteen.
Yeah.
At least fifteen, uh. Possibly older. I mean, it's not a, you know, when you're dealing with a tractor that age, you don't know.
Man, it ain't, the brakes on it ain't, you have to stand up on them to get it to stop, I mean, it's, it's just an old tractor. Those tractors were made between two thousand and five and two thousand and two, that, that model, four-fifty-one Massey. So it can be as old as two thousand and two model. So it's fifteen, you know, fifteen, seventeen years old.
Well, we don't have to do anything on it. We could get ten out of it. State bid, we could get one similar to it, brandy, maybe a little better, fifty horse, uh.
How often are we using it?
Well, we, every driveway that we do, great.
Oh, so where'd you choose an actual grader?
Well, it ma, since we got that box blade that Seth lived in Blade City, before we were having to drive the backhoe down there, load the trucks, haul the gravel, and drive the backhoe wherever you're gonna go work, and then if you didn't have enough, drive it all the way back. But what we've been doing is tailgating the gravel out and using the, the tractor with the backhoe, or with the box blade to finish the driveways out of those, because you can do a lot better job than you can try to finish them out with the backhoe.
And faster.
Yeah, a lot faster, so.
I mean, we've been told it needs to be broken too, you know? And then I've had people say, well, it ain't, it ain't that bad, so. It's a used seventeen, eighteen-year-old tractor, so.
Do we have the money to upgrade? To do that? We can burst them.
I think we'd find a four-wheel drive tractor to do that with, from forty to fifty horse is all we'd need, for maybe seven, eight thousand dollars. They might even find one through the state.
That's used.
Yeah, used.
Cause a brandy forty horsepower John Deere.
I'm not interested in buying one of that.
It's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm not buying, paying a boat from here.
Well, I mean, we're, we're just, we're better off to keep the one we got if we're on by used one.
That's right.
I don't know, it would be, but he bought a nice one over there at the shop. Seemed like he gave five thousand dollars for it.
It's two-wheel drive too, the one he bought.
Huh?
The one he bought's just two-wheel drive.
I know, but I've been on four-wheel drive.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're talking about probably a thousand or two thousand.
Yeah, at least two, twenty-five hundred, I would say.
Yeah.
Using any of that.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty-four drive too. Yeah, if you can find it.
That's a problem.
I mean, I, I'm just giving options, I'm not pushing for either way. We can keep our tractor as.
It's like, for what we do in our services and taxpayers' money, things like that, are we, I know we're a little some behind on certain things. That's kind of what I want to know, because really, it's not our money, it's the town's money, it's taxpayer dollars. And what we give back, and if we're being, if we're able to stay caught up, or even being able to try to make sure we're covering everybody, it needs to be covered in the town for whatever it can be, and you know, we got problems with, uh, maybe some bush hogging to get caught up, just different things and stuff I've noticed, I know these potholes, it's different things. This equipment, I know is definitely gonna help get us up to par and get us caught up with some of these things we're running behind on. If it's the backhoe and the tractor, or, you know, is it some of that stuff down at times where, you know, maybe we're, it's hard to keep that stuff caught up because we got equipment that's breaking down, or?
I say we just look at the backhoe, and if you don't take it, look at, for some tractors, and if we can find one, or what we sell that one for, or, or maybe get a good deal. Thousand, two thousand there, it's no lower than old tractor. I got a nineteen-seventy model, and I use it like old over, there's two of ours. I mean, honestly.
Sixty-five one. One is a sixty-five one.
We're, we're just coming.
But he said something that you should, that's very important.
Brakes.
He said no brakes.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's safety.
Yeah, that is a safety problem. He also said that there was problems with oil leakage, hydraulic leakage.
It has a hot problem, yeah.
So those safety items need to be fixed ASAP.
Yeah, if you're gonna keep it, it's gonna.
Because if it's a danger, you're gonna increase your cost of cop, all this, so we don't want to do it if they have an accident. Not counting the amount of liability, so that needs to be either repaired, put it in decommission that you can't use it because it's not operated properly.
Well, that's what I was asking, like, if we do that, is that getting us further and further behind in this kind of things that we are doing, or?
It needs to be put. Yes, it will. Until it gets repaired, yes.
Well, we can't do a whole lot with that until we get that covered, man.
We'll be right now, the backhoe's been down for, this is like four weeks, you know, we've been with it.
Yeah, one thing I'm, I'm thinking about is, you know, if we have, have the money to do it right now, we don't know what the future holds. So we keep that tractor another five or ten years, it breaks down then, whoever's sitting in these seats, we not, may not be in shape to replace it. You know?
Can you buy the tractor out of the street fund, or will it have to come out of general fund? Yeah, it'll have to come out of the general fund. But now.
If you're doing infrastructure, when it's good times, that's the time to take care of it.
The occupational fund. I mean, it's, it goes to the general fund.
Have you deposited that other?
Yes.
Okay, so you should have it to cover it.
Well, that's what's in there, she's still gonna add this to it. Yeah, that can go to the general fund. The occupational fund, yes.
I got it too, eighty, nearly three hundred, right? So we gotta bill for you.
But no spark.
Well, they got a backhoe, I know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know they got a backhoe.
That forgive me.
Do you, Don, you, do you think, have you looked at the backhoe, or, as they talk about, do you think it's a good deal on yet?
I hadn't even looked at it.
I laid out.
It's wore out.
No, I'm talking about twenty, twenty-five, yeah.
It's one me and you on.
Yeah, I hadn't seen the new one. If it's John Deere, it's gonna be.
Three thousand hours and that's not bad, yeah.
It is John Deere, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, the John Deere.
I mean, that's averaging about three hundred hours a year on that John Deere, so, I mean, you know, it, it.
We need a motion to buy it.
We're gonna get a backhoe.
Well.
Yeah, we, and the only thing I was wondering if we're trading, is it, is it giving us too much for it, you know? If a guy's giving you too much for a used tractor, that's not be a time to.
Yeah, on the tractor.
Yeah, and when you trade. Well, I don't know, I ain't seen a tractor either. For sure, we gotta have a backhoe.
He's definitely not under, he's not beating us.
So the trade would be twenty-one thousand, if you traded the tractor in.
It'd be twenty-two thousand, if we traded it.
I, I just say you need to see what the comparable price is on trade-in, and if it's within market, do it.
But now, if we get rid of the tractor, we have to purchase one, because that's what we use to do driveways.
Yeah, and you don't need a, you don't need a ninety horsepower tractor to do that.
You don't need, have to have a new one to do it.
And you can't take the bush hog off every time you, they're too hard to.
Trigreen's got some good usings up there right now.
Well.
And the state may have some.
Yeah.
I mean, I, and I'd rather hold on to what we know we have, if we're looking at a used one, myself. And just ride into it, ride into it.
Ride to the wheels fall off.
But you, but you know the brakes don't work and these other issues, and you gotta look at what it's gonna cost you to repair that.
That's something to tell you where it may, right?
You, you, brakes can be repaired.
Well, that's like, when the Trigreen's, they've been getting a, a, a one that's used one, they've gotta back that thing up.
That's right.
For so long, and it should be safety-ready to use when you pull it off that long. Anyway, what we're trading right now would be a good time, just, just look at it.
Well, the, the only one we've really talked about on the trading is the guy with the backhoe, with a wow of the ten. So. Steve, y'all use it every day, we, I mean, if we're trading to trade for another used one, what's your opinion on it?
Well, man, that's just like anything else, it's just going to run, but if you want to speak.
Have you, has anybody drove it, or is this just word of mouth that it's? The backhoe this individual has?
Yeah, that's a good backhoe.
So somebody's went over.
I ain't even looked at it that way.
I didn't.
I was like, I'm telling you, I don't.
Okay.
But, but if, I didn't drive it.
Yeah, you might want to drive it and check it out and all that good stuff.
It's good.
My worry is what I, I guess the, well, it's probably about a couple of weeks ago, we met about this, that we needed it, and we needed it a long time before then, I mean, I just, how much longer are we gonna? We gotta do something to do it.
We gotta have a backhoe tonight, we gotta.
We're either to.
Well, what else, I had a new tractor, and a used backhoe, I'll buy a new backhoe and keep truck from the guy.
That's over a hundred grand for any backhoe.
Nah, I paid ten, can, I paid seventy, right, and they bought it. Probably get one with five hundred hours on it for less than that.
This one's like new, or.
Two thousand hours on it, so they, and you're talking about a tractor having two thousand hours, two thousand hours on a backhoe was a lot more two thousand on a tractor.
Well, it's got three thousand, but it, that's really not any better.
Well, that's a lot of hours on a backhoe, in my opinion, versus a three thousand on a tractor.
It's about three hundred a year.
Knows a lot tougher.
It's, that was two thousand and ten model.
I don't see why you don't want to go with the used tractor, though, is what I'm saying. See what I'm saying, any compare it apples to oranges.
I mean, we can look at a used tractor, I ain't opposed to it.
I just want to get the backhoe out of the way.
I do too, we gotta have a backhoe.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, but we're dead in the water, ain't we, Steve? We ain't done nothing.
Traded.
Ain't homegrown, but.
I would say, I'm gonna make the motion, that you say it's a good one, I say you and Don go over there, Don was in the business for twenty-four years, let Don check it out.
I never run it though.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just saying, you check it out and run it, then, and, you know, if you think it's good, I'm gonna make a motion to buy it. I mean, that's, that's fine.
Didn't have a big dent in it or a tree path.
If you don't think we can get no better deal, what do you think there? I ain't price that, cause I don't want.
I don't want to either, I just know these guys that use it.
I mean, you know, you think, you know if it's a good deal or not, I mean, I won't make a motion to let.
But he's, he's saying it's a good backhoe.
Yeah.
So we ain't got no choice but to buy a backhoe, we right there.
Didn't you say the one we got, we got from him, or y'all traded with him before or something?
No, I only got that one out.
What do you?
No, we gotta get a backhoe.
I mean. We gotta have one, we gotta dump first thing, Don, if you think that's a good deal, I don't hold.
We can, we can trade at thirty-two thousand and.
Is he gonna give us any kind of war near as that is?
I bought that John Deere for the county that time, thirty-two thousand.
Many hours on it?
And it had a lot of hours on it. And that's basically used.
Yeah, that's been a good, and they beat that one, but they have taken.
Okay, we buying a lot, let's move forward.
I like the motion, perfect, I'm glad.
Alright, so we're purchasing.
Trade that backhoe in and buy that.
And thirty-two thousand. Everybody's good.
I like the motion.
You made a motion. We're trading.
The old backhoe.
The backhoe.
Then y'all talking about the tractor, bringing it through, that's why you say, we'll go from there, you know? Talking about the tractor, so that, that, bring it through, that's why, look at some, then bring it, then we'll move on. It's like, it's been in the state.
Yeah, it's.
They had an auction up there, and they were going to cheat.
Forever remember.
Three weeks ago, I went to, I went to a farm equipment auction.
Much like my kin here, that's on a free, they ain't gonna get nothing, I don't know that.
Alright.
I'm gonna second.
Eugene made the motion, Don made the second. All in favor? Everybody?
You had to look.
Yeah.
You wanna start this?
Time to go, I start shoving it back.
Is that Joe Biden?
So you wanna title the other charge?
Uh, well, it ain't on here.
Okay, well, I'll just.
We were discussing that.
Just discussing it.
Okay. Out of number two, update on Denson building and cover at Dove Jackson's name. I have not heard anything from Denson since he came up here with his contractor looking at the building.
So what's the next move? What can we do?
He has called up here hunting somebody, hasn't he?
I don't know when the, the last, the last time he called, I'm not sure.
It was around neighbor day, I guess, or the after.
He, I think he's called since then, hunting somebody that I'm sure offered to buy it, but he's either gonna have to.
He did call, it might have been first to last week, or then.
Hunting somebody.
Hunting somebody.
I'd say move to the next level of protocol. I don't care what it is.
Well, actually, the next level was the court system. We've sent him two notices. He's received both of those. So y'all make the decision tonight on how y'all want me to proceed.
I think that there was a person that was asking about purchasing it. That's what I'm thinking he was calling for.
Probably held it up more than anything, but, but they've been people asking for eight years.
I think we need to move forward. What, has he, has it been past thirty days? Has he had ample time?
I think it's, it, it's close if it isn't past it.
I'm really scared to say, I mean, he's come over, and they know, his, y'all, his lot of their, I mean, put up a new sign, private property keep off, so.
He owns over beside you, too?
Cross the road from, want, analysis.
Okay, okay.
They don't, nobody own it.
And Dove's the water department, which I know they've had a lot of, or lately, but.
What I was wondering about the Dove is, uh, it's gotta be fixed.
Yep.
No matter what. I wondered, you know, like, I know, Don, you can, I look at it, get a price on it, or whatever, but, for that instance, moving forward. And I can't get to it, it's, it don't, that don't negate the fact, it's a safety issue, that it needs fixed, can you not just send that bill to the water department? Let them buy it. It's gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be done, and us knowing that there's a problem there, and turning a blind eye to it puts us at jeopardy.
I know it's been that way for forty years. I don't know.
But I'm just, I, I don't think Dove.
That one, the one at the swimming pool's the same way.
They, they just need cover.
Somebody falls off in it, and then you're gonna get sued.
That's ones I went up there to get covers for, and I got shot down, evidently.
I thought we agreed that they were gonna put some kind of metal cover over that.
They've got a metal cover.
I don't know, he, he wasn't there, Tim wasn't there, and she said, I'll tell him, and he ran them to y'all.
That's all you got to tell them?
And what the Dove's.
No, he, yeah, I went to Tim to get them made, I had a size in there, but.
And the truck broke across it and collapsed it.
And we never did get, and that was before neighbor day.
We'll check into that tomorrow, see what we need to do.
Yeah, let's see if we can get it out. Yeah, that age, they put here. Or somebody gets hurt.
So the Denson, we're gonna move to the next level, under that.
I'm scared to say.
Yes.
Cause he is, when he was number five, and coming through the contractor, that we was steadily moving forward in.
Right.
We need a motion on that, Tom?
We do. And here's the way I'm, I'm thinking about attacking that, if y'all pass that tonight, I'll send him a seven-day notice that the council voted, I'll send it out tomorrow for me to proceed. And I'm certainly going to proceed in seven days, or fourteen, whatever y'all think's appropriate. Uh, if he doesn't do something, that I'll build a fire under him.
I think it's a good move, right there about seven-day deal. That lets him know we're, we're, we're pursuing it, we're not gonna quit this time, we're gonna do something, something.
If y'all voted tonight for me to proceed, that oughta wake him up, if it doesn't wake him up, you know, it's his fault. Well, it's his fault anyway, but it's certainly his fault if he ignores that.
Alright, Kevin, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Send him a seven-day notice.
I just sent him a seven day notice that we're gonna proceed towards. With, uh.
Send him a notice for him to proceed with pairs or the town to summon him to court.
If that's the right, correct part of this.
Well, what's in that policy? It says if the town has to repair or clean up or whatever, then.
Be billed back to him.
We be billed back to us, yeah. So if we have to get involved and we start cleaning the, tearing the roof off or whatever, he's gotta pay us that.
Right. Right.
I'm telling the roof off, we're gonna demolition it, run it back over to.
Yeah.
I would not. Bring the new backhoe. So you're holding it.
Yeah.
No, we need to.
It's good for getting it out.
Try it over without one more time.
One more time.
We, we need to let him know that we're going to do that, that we're gonna proceed to, for condemnation on the building, uh, as well as remedies under the ordinance.
Even if the other one out here burned, they didn't take that long to get it.
Right.
Demoed down. And that one's been sitting out there, what, seven years since tornado?
Yeah.
And it was, it was vacant before the tornado.
Right. Oh, yeah, it was in bad shape.
Never on the corner of the table.
Tornado exacerbated the condition.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
Need a motion and second.
Second.
Motion. Who did the motion?
I made it.
Oh, yeah, Kevin? I was right and I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Ah, I'm gonna go with him even though I am scared of him.
Well, I I think he may be on the right track, but I'll go with you too. Alright, new business. Number one, discuss fire trucks and equipment. Chief Hood.
I just wanted to come to y'all and talk to you and tell you, we're still in the process trying to get all our older stuff caught up that we've been unable to get caught up throughout the years, just because of the money. But, uh, since the three mil tax has helped us out, we've been slowly, we went ahead and prioritized, got all our safety stuff, we're working on still, got a few items on that. But the next thing we'd like to do is we'd like to do some consolidating. We'd like to, uh, drop down from four trucks to three. Uh, what, uh, that'll still, will still be able to cover our pumping capacity, anything that we need to do to meet ISO compliance, we can do with three trucks, as long as we get big enough pumps. But, uh, we'd like to, uh, try to get rid of the, the ladder truck, which is twenty-eight years old. And we'd also like to replace the nineteen eighty-eight model engine, which is thirty-one years old. Uh, the thirty-one year old engine has over two hundred thousand miles on it. Uh, it has, uh, over two hundred thousand hours, pump hours on it. It's been a real good truck. We've had it, let's see, I think we got it in oh-seven, something like that, but of course it was used when we got it. But we'd like to have permission to go ahead and try to put both of those trucks up for sale to see what kind of money we can get out of them. And then turn around and take what we get off those two trucks, pay down on a newer truck, and go borrow whatever we need. And let the tax, the three mil tax, make the yearly payment on it. And it's money that we didn't plan on having to start with, but it gets us upgraded now. Uh, that being said, we have also applied for two grants. Uh, we won't know about those probably sometime June, July, possibly, maybe later. But it's the FEMA grants. Uh, we applied for new rescue tools, cause all our stuff is about thirty-two years old. So we're trying to modernize that. Uh, and we also applied, the grant writer encourages us to go ahead and apply for a truck. He said, you know, you never know, we might get it, we might not. Uh, so there is a possibility of that happening down the road. If that does happen, we'll only have to pay the ten percent of the grant fee on the truck, which we applied for, I believe it was three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I believe it's the bids I've gotten. And, you know, we'd be out thirty-two on that if we were to get it. I don't. Uh, a company out of Tennessee. They came highly recommended and if they don't get, we don't get awarded, they don't get nothing. If they do get awarded, they get five percent. So they done all of certain.
How much you, how much you got to get that deal?
Uh, sixty, yeah, somewhere around in there, it's like that. The rescue tools, it's a forty thousand dollar grant. Uh, we're, uh, I've got one more scheduled, company coming in Saturday will make, or we had to have four, uh, bids, so I've had four different tool companies come in. Uh, so that, therefore, if we get that, then we'll be able to sit down and get that, and that'd be the same thing, it'd be ten percent, five percent on that also. But we won't know about those. They won't even start awarding those probably till sometime next month. And then that's, you gotta go through the entire United States, so. It, we could get awarded in the first month, or it could be the August before the, we know anything on that. But the main thing I wanna do is, is we wanna try to go ahead and put these trucks up, post them with someone, uh, like Brinley Mountain and there's a couple of other broker and companies. To where we can, you know, try to get some feelings of what we might be able to get out of them. I don't think it'll be a, a whole lot, considering the trucks and their age. Uh, but whatever, at least it'd give us a starting point to know where we got to look at as far as money wise.
Is the ladder truck the one that came from Nevada or somewhere?
California, yes. It was a donated truck. Uh, it cost a lot to keep that truck up. It, cause it has the ladder and it has extra maintenance that has to be done, plus it has extra service. It costs us a little over, right at twelve hundred dollars annually, just to have the ladder certified. Cause it has to be re-certified every year, and that's not counting the thirty-five hundred annual fee it costs when we have the oils changed and the dirt, the truck completely serviced and pump tested. So.
So if we're losing that truck, Steve, it's not gonna hurt or affect our ISO score?
No, they can only ma- make us pump thirty-five hundred gallon a minute is the max that we have to pump. We're way over that now. That ladder truck does fifteen hundred GPMs a minute. The other ones are, uh, the eighty-five model that was donated, it does fifteen hun- no, it does twelve hundred and fifty. And we got another twelve hundred and fifty, so we're way over. We can easily come under the thirty-five hundred with three units.
What happens if you get damaged, you sell those two and you're waiting on purchase of another when your ISO is gonna drop?
Uh, no, not unless they come in and do an audit in between that time and that.
Because what happens if we don't get the grant? And we're gonna.
Well, I mean, I, I wanna do this whether we get the grant or not. If we get the grant, then we'll have a brand new truck, plus a newer truck will be really in good shape for fifty years down the road, is what I'm getting at. I wanna go ahead and get this done. We had this in mind before we even talked about applying for a grant for a new truck. Because like I said, we didn't figure we had a chance with us having four units, even though they were old. But like I said, the grant writer was the one that encouraged us because one of the units, the, uh, the one, the truck we got from Delaware, it's got the open cab on the back. Well, that's no longer ISO compliant. But as long as you're running the truck, you can keep running it, but it won't meet standards. I believe it was ninety-one, they changed it that you could have no more open back cabs, just a safety thing. So, but, uh, like I said, and I mean, that truck's in better shape than the.
You gonna just put it on the gov dot com?
Well, what there's, the, like Brinley Mountain Fire Company, there's a feet and fire, they're brokers. What it is, is they'll just put your truck on their page. And if they get hits on it and they sell it for you, then you owe them a percentage of it. That's, that's the way they do it.
That's the way it is.
And we can do that, I, I mean, we can do the gov deals. It, you know, cause you can always set a minimum and if it doesn't meet that, then you don't go.
But the, the good thing about Brinley Fire Department, where they're.
Brinley Mountain, yeah.
They've got, that's all they're doing, so people will go with their mental.
Well, they're the, they're the largest used truck dealer in the United States. Brinley Mountain Fire apparatuses up in Alabama, you know, and up north of Alabama. They're the largest used truck dealer. But now, see, they, they sell tons of trucks that they never even touch. It's just brokering the trucks out. Well, of course, there again, it'd be money wise, but, you know, even if you get a, a two thousand model truck, which would still be nineteen years old at this time, you're still talking up to eighty thousand dollars. I mean, fire trucks are just absolutely ridiculous. I mean, a new truck, like I said, that I spect out is three hundred and twenty-something thousand dollars. So, you know, if we could, any, the newer we could go, the better. I mean, that, that'd be the best, but, you know, there's gonna be a money limit in there, but until we got it, trying to figure out what kind of down payment we can come up with.
Have y'all, have y'all budgeted in the fire papers, uh, building payment next year, making it over?
Nah, we haven't, but, I mean, I mean, that's something we could look at. I went and talked to the bank and just asked them, you know, about doing the yearly, one-time yearly payment and paying like anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand every year out of that money. Just on the payment, and they said, yeah, that'd be something they'd work with. Of course, y'all would have to do that, it'd be through the town and with the town. But they were, you know, said that they'd give y'all a real low rate as far as on the money.
So, Steve, on this three mil tax that we're gonna, there, and you may know this, Tom, you, there, there's not gonna be no re, there's not gonna be no re-cussions on this, they go back and revisit it or change or anything?
You talking about the three mil thing?
Yeah.
What you're asking, can they do away with it?
Yes, they can.
Yeah, they can.
Yeah, they can always do away with anything.
So, the last.
Why would they can?
I mean, it's, I've heard some discussion in the past, they're wanting to try to check into it or something to try to do, you know, to take.
When, the first year it passed, there was a lot of people that was upset about it, but, I mean, I haven't heard any.
I hadn't heard anything lately on it either, but, you know, there was some people talking about re-life, take out some of the personal.
Yeah, they were wanting, they were wanting to move the car tags and all off on it, is what it was. See, all that got added to it once it got to Montgomery. Nobody in the county was even aware of that being on there till it was done past.
I'm sure he's not voting for it. I wasn't aware of it either.
Yeah, see, and it got added on. Well, Don knows how that work, he's been down there and dealt with them. They add on stuff all the time, so. But, but we'd, like I said, we'd like to especially go ahead and get the ladder truck on somewhere and get it, see what kind of money we can get out of it. Cause right now, it's all, certification is good till October, and then I'm gonna have to have it all resetted again. But if we could get rid of it, why, cause that's a big thing, you know, that's the first thing they ask. Anybody wants to know if you got an area off sale, is your ladder certified? Because like I said, that's a big expense, and it's a big expense if it doesn't pass to get it fixed. And, you know, we're, we're not, to be qualified to have to have it, we'd have to have three residential buildings over three stories tall. We're not got that or odds of us ever having it. If we did, then that'd be something we'd have to look at later. But, you know, I think it's just a, a, an expense that we could stand to do without. And be a whole lot better off upgrading and consolidating down. Like I said, be three trucks to pay insurance on instead of four, it'd be three trucks to keep service instead of four. The money, it would eventually pay for itself in the long run.
Plus the money you get, you can put it in the car.
Right, so, you know, it's just.
You already made a motion to.
Well, I just wanna get permission from y'all to do it, yeah. I mean, that's what I'd like to do, is go ahead and try to broker both the trucks out. Get some feelings out there and see what kind of money we're looking at, and then, like I said, that would give us a chance to try to figure out what could we need to budget in as far as to buy a truck. You know, if I'm gonna have twenty-five thousand to pay down, or if I'm gonna have forty thousand to pay down, something like that, so I got a ballpark to work with.
You got an idea of what you wanna go back with, let me?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I wanna go back with a conventional cab, crew cab. They're easier to work on, they're less expensive to work on. Uh, custom trucks are great, they look real good in parades, but they cost you twice as much to get them worked on, because if it doesn't have a tilt cab, then everything's internal and it's a hundred and twenty-five bucks a hour for service charge. So if it's simpler to work on, a conventional cab truck would be a crew cab, still get all the compliance we need as far as being able to carry enough people, but it's a regular international truck chassis. You know, it can be flipped the hood over and work on it. It's easier to service it, it's less maintenance.
Alright, so what's your, what would it be, permission to put the trucks?
Put two trucks up for sale and see what kind of money we can get out of it.
Motion to put them up for sale.
That's an idea.
I have one more question. So if you sell the two, let's say they got sold tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll still be in compliance.
We'll still be able to operate. I mean, we'll be, if I sell two, we'll have to, I mean, we want to buy one pretty quick, but ISO only rates us every five, ten years, unless you apply and ask to be rerated. You can call anytime and say, hey, look, we've done a lot of stuff, we've done a lot of work, we think our rating's gonna go down, we'd like for y'all to come out and re-rate us. Outside of that, we have went as far as eighteen years, eighteen years apart and never been touched.
What, what is our score right now?
We're eight, we're a five. We went from an eight to a five.
I'd make a suggestion, put the ladder truck up and sell it, and then you know about what the other one's worth, don't you? Cause you be on the fire department forever. If you sell it, it can find something instead of selling them bows and then have to hurry into something. So it'll give you a little bit of time.
I've got no problem with that.
I, I don't have no issue with selling them bows, but we do not need the ladder truck, correct?
I mean, we not, we don't have the buildings to need.
Right.
That's what it said a minute ago.
I would say, sell it and then when, see, when you see what you can get out of it.
Right.
Start looking at the one you're wanting to purchase.
Yeah, I've got no problem doing it that way.
You know, and then, that way, you know, it ain't like.
And then we can go ahead and purchase and we, and then turn the other one up for sale. I've got no problem doing that way.
You can look at it. You'll know, you'll know within probably a thousand or two what you can get for the other ones, and then that'll give you still the ideal. And then, you know, we won't be sitting here having to hurry up and wait, cause if something, if you find what you want and if something falls through transporting and all that, so we'll say.
Yeah, I've got no problem doing it that way. But like I said, if you have a ladder, I'd like to try, I would go try to sell the ladder first anyway, just because of the fact of the.
My question was to sell, I didn't spend.
To sell the ladder truck.
The ladder truck.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was.
He just spits out ladder.
But, yeah, I've got no problem doing it that way, but we'd just like to try to get, like I said, we, we've been progressively trying to improve everything we've got, so.
Alright, so Tabby, you make the motion to allow them to.
Sell the ladder truck.
Sell the ladder truck. We gotta, I got a second.
Yeah.
All in favor? So, everybody?
I appreciate it. So I got, unless y'all have any questions?
Thanks, Steve.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, hard work over there for no pay, for real, buddy. It's all volunteer, and I know you put a lot of time and effort in. It'll help you anyway, we can.
Yeah, about thirty years this month.
Yeah, I'm afraid they never make you do.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item number two, our lifeguards and supervisors. Um, we've got five that have applied. Out of those, start with three are certified.
Two.
Two.
Which one of the Hamilton girls, sir?
No. So I, I'm making.
Who were the people then?
Uh, Brian Sweeney and Olivia Little.
Olivia was a lifeguard last year.
Yeah, and Brian was too.
And they were the.
They're certified.
Her brother.
Uh, Haley Vickery is a new one, and there's two applicants from Hamilton, two girls. And, uh, they, the three of those are not certified.
Alright.
And we have one supervisor applicant.
Who is that?
Uh, Elaine Nichols.
Emily Nichols?
Elaine.
Who is that?
She used to help with the band some, when they had just like a drum corps.
Yeah.
And, uh, she's got some.
Is it P. Miles?
James Nichols, that is, uh, a senior this year, that's her son, and then she has some other children that she's, um, taking care of, her family.
P. Miles, why?
Yep.
I make a motion, we hire all five lifeguards pending they pass certification in CPR. And we hire Elaine for supervisor. Yeah, we, we have one more that has not applied, um, which would give us two, where we could rotate them each day. Luke is gonna apply, he'll have it in tomorrow.
Yeah, he, he'll have it in tomorrow sometime and.
Who?
And they, we all know Luke, my grandson, and he's strong and big and he, he'll do good, but he's got, he's on travel team in Huntsville, so.
As a lifeguard?
He can't work on the weekend. I wanted y'all to know that, cause I told Darryl that, that. He can't work on the weekend, I wanted y'all to know that, cause I told Darryl that, that if they can rotate it, we're just not there on the weekend.
Oh, that ain't a problem.
Give me their.
But seriously, rotate six of them anyway, yeah, cause we ended up having one or two quit last year, after they got certified.
Olivia talked to me and she asked whoever did the schedules not to put her with Brian, her stepbrother.
Okay.
Because she had to do all the work.
I got you.
And that, that'd be the same thing for like pending certification.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they won't have no problem with that.
I didn't realize that was her stepbrother, I done that schedule, I did not realize that.
Yeah, that's Jamie's son and, and Rebecca's daughter.
Yeah.
Alright. Well, really, I, I, I'll make the recommendation, I guess, y'all need to, uh, what do y'all need to make a motion and second?
She's a pretty low.
Make a motion to hire all six applicants for lifeguards and.
Elaine, Elaine for supervisor, and second?
Second. Now Elaine does realize, she doesn't get a break.
Carla Chisholm had called and asked about it, just she had a new gym sister, and I thought she'd be wonderful, but I think that, cause I told her, it was every day. And I, maybe that's, you know.
Or she would.
I, I was really wanting her to apply.
She ain't got another job to work.
Yeah, sure, cause that you get.
Yeah, hang on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she's gonna be there seven days a week, no break.
And, um, Gracie is probably gonna work with her, or she would've been certified to, to come back, but she's a chick.
Alright, item number three, discuss the po. Um, like we talked about earlier, we are tied up bush hogging and. Grading gravel, patching, anything else you can think of in the summertime? Are y'all interested in getting a price from Jamie to prepare the, or a price from anybody? Jamie or the water department guys, if they can get to it, we can, we'll get them to do it, but if they can't, we gotta have somebody on it.
Yeah, busy too, so.
Or you can give a bid and, and then just call a special session, and if it's over your limit, your purchasing limit or whatever, your approval, what is that?
Five hundred.
Five hundred, oh, it's gonna be over that, cause I think it was four thousand last year.
It ain't gonna be nowhere near that.
It shouldn't be.
But he didn't want it like paint or stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there was that, the, I don't, I don't know if the plumbing ever got repaired, you know, it's leaking up underneath that, where the life, the life, uh, dive board was at. That whole valve was busted and it's supposed to have been repaired, and still hasn't done.
Yeah.
Is that up under the concrete?
Yeah.
It's gonna be above what we can do, I mean, we'll have to hire that out when we do it.
Yeah.
Then we'll have to do that off season or nothing.
Yeah, I think it's too late now, but we're okay through the summer, but it does have to be done.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll check with Jamie and the water department, see what they got going on. Alright, item number four, um. Discuss posting the rec center job, Mr. Woods, now at first said he could do it and wanted it, but now he can't do it, so. We need to post that job.
And it's seven twenty-five an hour, is that correct?
Seven twenty-five an hour, and the hours were, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, is that right?
Yeah.
We didn't do it weekends, did we?
I make a motion.
And it was from six to nine, wasn't it?
I'd say.
Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday.
Yeah.
And I had a couple of people, we've had several call, I had one little girl got ugly with me about it, and I told her.
They got banned as adults.
I get calls every day, yeah.
And I told her, she just needed to not worry about it until it was posted, like when it was gonna open.
Alright, I made a motion to post the job at seven twenty-five.
Have we got everything cleaned up out of it, ready for it to be opened to the public?
Everything, but the, uh. Um, maps of all the.
Okay, cause I need.
Can we post a minimum age?
I need to go in there, get all the basketballs and everything put up too.
Can we post a minimum age limit on that, Mr. Glenn, like must be above twenty-five to apply, being that it's a supervision job or something to eliminate the phone call? I mean, if y'all want an adult to do it.
You gotta have, because.
That's what I would think, cause you would foster from them kids, or if we paid them, that's gonna go back on the table or something else.
You don't have to take charge of them.
I make a motion, post it, put the hours and put the age and.
Twenty-five, about.
Don't just shoot from here, I'll give y'all, I think there's possible twenty-five.
Twenty-five or.
Twenty-one or.
I'd say twenty-one, I mean, you're an adult at twenty-one, but. Must be at least twenty-one.
Yeah, he was, you know, person in there.
Well, he's legally an adult in the state of Alabama at nineteen, so Tony, are we gonna get any kind of regulations for age discrimination or anything?
No, I wouldn't think so, not on something like that, as long as it's uniform, you're alright on that.
And we can still get the applications and look at them and see if we can find somebody older that we can, that we, that fits more of our.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So what's the correct age?
I'd say twenty-one, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
You ought to be mature enough at twenty-one to do the job.
Well, you gotta be, what is it, twenty-one to deal with alcohol in this state, so I think that would be.
That's what I was thinking, if you can drink beer at twenty-one, you're the boss, a little bit.
Yeah, y'all be able to do responsible.
Yeah, that's right.
You wanna start doing it in Florida?
Hey, that makes that job I got now.
Why don't you go up there and do that?
Alright, we need a motion to, uh, post the job, seven twenty-five an hour on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, six to nine. Minimum age is twenty-one to apply.
Motion.
Kevin made the motion, Tabby seconds, all in favor? Everybody? Alright, discuss fourth of July, um, what you got there, Carl?
Uh, someone had asked if we were doing it, and, uh, Steve Hood had talked about it too, that we usually use. That for their rescue squad to make that money when they sell them, the, the food and all, um. I didn't know if anybody would, in, was interested in doing it or not again.
I'd say if the fire department wants to do it, we tell them spearhead it and run with it. That's my opinion.
Also, they said that they didn't have the means to, um, hire the entertainment.
Well, they've got seventy thousand dollars in the bank.
They can't use that, this rescue squad, not the fire department.
What is?
What they're talking about here.
Well, they can say the fire department's putting it all as a fundraiser, you can spend money to raise funds, can't you?
I'm just saying, they don't bring in any money from the rescue squad unless they raise it, fire department has money.
Well, the rescue squad and fire department's all one, and it's separate, so they got a separate budget.
Yeah, we don't even get to see the, we don't even get to see what they got in the bank.
It's a volunteer.
Uh.
It's a volunteer.
Well, fire department is too.
I know, but well, it's not associated with the town.
E.G., we don't even get to see what they got in the bank.
Well, we don't even get to prove what they spend their money on, they pay their money, so I don't know. I don't care what y'all, they'll be working, so, I'm just saying to y'all, y'all know if y'all make it or not, y'all work on it.
If.
If totally.
Yeah, I mean, if everybody can help out and leading up to it, can be there and help, I'm, I'm totally good with it.
Cause basically, all we do anyway is just, we end up leading into hiring entertainment, basically started out, we're just helping to fool them. And somebody volunteered to bring some fireworks up here and it just blew up the wire.
No, no, they didn't volunteer.
Yeah, yeah, it started out over on Hill.
Nobody, nobody ever volunteered to bring, bring fireworks.
Nobody volunteered.
I thought Donald, yeah, I thought that Donald Donald McKinney had started over at her house and then gave it.
What started it was. What started it was Robert, Dollar Star.
So, and y'all pay for them.
Entered us in a contest, and they gave us fireworks, the money for the fireworks.
The first year.
The first year, and then that started it and, and it's been going on ever since, and had a great turnout.
Big turnout.
But was it grand required for the fireworks by going out?
We do, sometimes we can, I don't know if there's any grant money available or not. So if not, we'll have to raise the money.
I mean, I don't have no problem with it, but I do have a problem with obligating your town employees that work all these holidays, when some of them aren't gonna be off, problem I got with. Now, I don't want to be, man, uh, we're gonna do this, and you get to be there every time, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Christmas, that's not right, in my opinion.
Well, I don't, I don't remember I've all been there on all the holidays, you remember that, Donald?
Well, every time we have some, it's like at Labor Day.
That's not a holiday.
I ain't know, they get to be there.
Out of the last five years or whatever we've been doing this, how much has turned out and we have?
For what?
It's been, it's been a lot of people.
A bunch of people.
So the people, to me.
It's really bigger than Labor Day.
I do too, and I think it needs to be put on because, and we need to figure out what we're gonna do.
You know, if.
And it, and it's gonna take a, the fire department, the rescue squad, everybody coming back together like we used to do.
It's really very.
The town was gotta be a part of it.
That's correct.
They can't make it work without the town.
I hear more good things about it, you know.
Yeah. A lot of people can't go and make cash, so they come up here.
And that, that was hard this year because, last year we changed it to the first Sunday and, or first weekend in May. Then we changed it back this year, and people had booked things already for this weekend, I couldn't get anybody hardly to come. So, and I've heard people say, why don't you put it as one thing?
Yeah, I've got that a several times.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to just combining them, to combine them, to one or the other.
And doing a Fourth of July.
I couldn't believe there was this many people still around home that would turn out on Fourth of July that wouldn't in other places, but there is a lot.
I'm not sure.
Especially for fireworks.
It's probably.
Parking, parking becomes a problem for us if you're.
Bigger than every day.
Who paid for the fireworks last year? The family didn't.
Did we not get a grant from?
We got some from.
Some from R.C.A.D.
R.C.A.D., two thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Which nearly paid for, paid for a lot of it.
They usually run around twenty-five hundred dollars for the fireworks.
And that's a good show, I mean.
And, um, Donald and Gary don't charge us for doing it.
Gary Dollar goes and picks them up, brings them, and they line them up, set them off.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll.
I mean, I haven't talked to this year, but they haven't been here yet.
Next year, not this year, see, now the turnout this year, it's good.
Last year we had that fireworks, now he's on the voice.
Yeah, yeah, inside the top, what is it, six or eight, let it take? Be something, if you want it, we could say, last year at this time, he was right down here.
That swimming pool dance, big too, you have kids.
The head of the voice.
The, the swimming pool is a big deal.
A lot of them that never get to come, they, they come that day, and they spend the whole day.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you'll notice too, families come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They bring them a picnic lunch, and they bring their chairs and.
Well, you got the bouncy houses for the kids and.
Yes, the fire department does that.
Last year we had vendors too, like come some.
We had a few, now I can see if we can do that. The lemonade guy can come probably.
Ice cream and.
The ice cream guy couldn't come to Neighbor Day because he was in Fulton, and he loves to come here, I could see about that.
The people have a decent choice of like trying to get food.
But the food thing, we, we leave that for Steve and them, because that's, that's how they make their money, and they're gonna do Boston Buds.
They do want.
Anyway, is everybody in favor of doing the Fourth of July?
Yeah, we're good. I think we're good. You are, isn't it?
Alright, I don't think we need a motion on that. Um, item number six, discuss reimbursement with Bill, Brad. I talked with him today, he's supposed to be sending a three thousand dollar check in the morning, um. And then he was wanting to figure out a way that he could make the rest of it in payments, and he mentioned today about working weekends to make that money up. But you get into more than him just making that money and paying us back, because you have retirement, social security, Medicaid.
Yeah, that can't happen.
Um, so, I don't see how we can.
Man, that's gonna screw the chief scheduling up and all of that.
Well, Jeremy's okay with it, he.
If he showed up.
Yeah, we can look at is us getting our money and.
Moving on.
And moving on, and then worry about.
Even if he pays a hundred a month on, for two years, if, if we can get that three thousand dollar check.
Yeah.
I'd say get that first.
And then tell him, pay us a hundred dollars a month for two years and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's a man of his word, he'll pay the rest of it, that's right.
Hey, he got no man of his word yet, what, what reason, what reason does he give you to do this, cause at first, we're gonna pay him a target check, and we'll pay you anything to us, now. He's got thirty thousand, and we won't pay the rest of it out.
He can get no reason, but I'm sure he don't have any reason, probably paid it out, I'm sure.
Tony.
Well, that's not our fault, banks have got plenty of money, every time I buy something, I go, boy.
What, see, if he was to send the three thousand tomorrow?
I would say.
Would that not make him look more, if we had to go do something later on, give him more reliable that he has sent the three thousand?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Showing that he knows that he owes.
Yeah.
Well, I would say let him give us three thousand dollars and four quarterly payments of five hundred, and that be it, that way, he'll pay us five hundred four times over a year. Hate to be a hard tale about it, but, you know, he knew the circumstances when he signed the contract, but. A lot of things happened, I mean, there've been things happening in my life, my whole life, I've robbed Peter and Pay Pal every day, I mean, that's big.
He didn't plan what happened to him, but.
Yeah, but did that have any effect on this?
It shouldn't have, but it, it.
I understand that, yeah.
Get the three thousand to build the land, tell him to pay us over a year, and we'll pay back.
We give him eighteen months to pay us off.
With no interest?
No, that's eighteen months after he pays the three thousand?
Yes, a long time, yeah.
I know, for two thousand dollars.
With no interest?
We're not a bank, I mean, we just want our money back.
I know, but he should have to, we shouldn't have to be setting up payments, if we just like we did with the.
I know, we signed a contract.
Well, what, what do y'all today, what would it matter to me?
I mean, we'll play hardball, somebody was building with no shingles on it, no, we're talking about five thousand dollars here, man signed a contract, but, don't matter.
So five hundred a quarter over how long, one year?
Three, four quarters.
In three months, in one year.
Like to get the three thousand dollars.
Right.
That's right. Yeah, I can talk a little bit different.
You and me too.
That's over half of that.
Get back.
And that's what I told him, once we get that check, we'll negotiate the rest of the payment, but.
Right.
The one thing I'll give that to him, I already said he nice, mail it tomorrow.
I wouldn't give him that other option until you see that check in there.
Right, get the money.
I wouldn't tell him anything.
Get it, get it to bank, make sure it's a good check, and then.
Yeah, make sure it catches.
Right, I've had a check before that wasn't that good.
Yeah, I, I've got.
Yeah, if that amounts, I'll write you another.
I've got some big ones in my drawer though.
I'll let him know after we get the package, we'll figure out his balance again, and we'll be fair with him.
House all the way across that Florida.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, we need to, need a motion in a second.
Need a motion after we s- received the check, to offer him a fair repayment plan for the town. To offer him a fair repayment plan for the town and for him.
Well, before we do that, if, if they get, if we get the check, then you can bring it up at the next meeting, put it on the minutes to discuss it again. And then that way, because if he doesn't send the check, we're gonna have to redo the whole thing.
That's right, there you go.
So.
Three thousand, no.
That's right.
We, we gotta see that.
Well, that, that word is, kinda took the scare of that.
I want counsel one of the.
If he says three thousand dollar check, then we will.
Negotiate.
Then we'll have another make.
And put it back away.
Whatever, it'll be on agenda next time anyway.
So make your motion, Tabby.
Don't know, I ain't eating, I'm.
Me neither, I had worked a lot, like, so you can't trouble.
You worked a lot, yeah, I mean, I just.
There's, I don't know if there really is a motion, cause you were just giving a briefing, we don't have anything to discuss at this point, until you see what it is, cause it says discuss, so there's really not a motion, in my opinion.
So when we get the check, we'll come back and figure out what we need to get.
Right.
Okay.
Item number seven, Tyler Norton, um, I talked with the state of Alabama Fish and Game. Carl sent them more information they wanted, and I talked back with him today, and he, he's got everything he needs, they're processing it this week. We'll have the money by Friday or the beginning of next week, according to the state.
And he left them, where are they paid?
That's what I'm thinking.
Don't matter.
The one, the one.
We never pay them, put it on.
They're original.
I know, without.
The one you leave your contract and go to work for is the one live for your contract.
And then state will go after their money, so they'll pay it.
Yeah, they can work that.
They, they will, yeah.
So they told you you'd have it by Friday?
Friday or beginning of next week.
That's about sixteen thousand there, that'd be awesome. Good deal.
So.
That's gonna be very long.
Uh, I'd like to set the, uh, equipment sale on the kitchen equipment from May eighteenth to twelve o'clock, get that out of the way, be done with it.
Right.
Set a minimum bid, three thousand dollars. Or whatever y'all want it to be.
I don't, I don't have.
Well, has like.
Will it be on that fair, research to see what's fair or?
You're saying three thousand dollars for all of it?
I'm just saying I'm gonna go.
Oh, okay, okay.
If, well, I mean, we can, we can set it anywhere y'all want to, it don't matter.
What about the hood, it's going through the roof?
It's still over there, something where I have to take it down and then.
Are we gonna have to pay for it to be repaired, the roof?
We just have to put metal over it.
Are there another restaurant going in there right now?
Yeah.
Then why are they not purpose?
We might just let them buy the hood or tell them to bid on the hood or something.
They can, they can bid on all of it.
Wish we'd put that on there.
That hood alone would be worth probably that much.
We wish, we'd had that on there, so I don't know who's going in there and all about that, that ain't on here, so.
We'll set it higher if y'all want.
No, I'm.
I'm just starting.
Yeah.
We don't need to be in the kitchen.
And I am.
Yeah, you gotta have a bid.
That way you don't miss out on ways.
We didn't have to.
So.
Well, what you don't wanna have happen is here you do a minimum bid, unless they only go for three thousand dollars, and then it costs us ten thousand to fix that roof.
What roof?
Her roof, when we take it, if it got, went to a different person than the Mexican people that's in, coming in there.
Oh, yeah. Right.
So you don't wanna have that happen.
Right, we could add a, uh. Amendments there.
I'm just hoping they're saying that.
They would be responsible for.
Roof repairs?
Roof repairs and getting that van out.
There you go, that needs to be put in there, that's a good.
The buyer, yeah, the buyer.
Three thousand and.
Yep, buyer's responsible for removing and repair, yeah.
To repair to owner's standards.
Oh.
No, you don't know that, you don't never get it repaired. I'm sure I'm like that.
I ain't said a word. What'd you say, you said, I ain't said that?
The prayer from Leaky.
For removing hood.
You know, you're already done, right?
Did she repair her roof?
I just say, I just say, cool, it's still right whole.
He did?
What's that?
He fixed it whole.
Does he, is he interested in that hood?
Who is, who is the people?
So if he.
Hank's got, I don't remember what time, what's that actually, Mike, so.
Yeah.
Who knows?
They're from Hank's or maybe. They're from Hank's or maybe.
He's the guy.
Yeah.
Who knows?
I heard you said that's something from Hank's, is that correct?
Yeah.
They're kin too.
He told me tonight, he's there just about.
I'm just excited.
Carl, you got. Minimum, three thousand dollars. Buyer is responsible for removing the stove hood and repairing the roof.
Right.
All right, when did you say he was doing that?
That gets us out of.
And Alan, Alan. Alan, uh, said he would bid it off and the buyer pays ten percent premium. But we don't have that, then we're just, we're out, I'll move it now.
Buyer's premium plus taxes?
Well, I ain't worried about no taxes.
That's what they want to have, Alan, okay.
I don't think the town will charge him.
They do if you go to sell them, they can pay sales tax.
You do, they do over here, you have to.
No, he charges them, that's, that's the town, yeah.
Well, we'll have to collect, we sell something, so we collect sales tax.
But no, we won't collect on his premium.
No, we'll collect it from the buyer.
The buyer has to pay sales tax.
And base, that's eight percent of three thousand, I'd be, what, twenty-four dollars?
So if they bid three.
Three forty, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be on him, be on the buyer, eight percent, whatever a tax is, I don't want it.
Eight percent.
He eighty on a thousand, wasn't he?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be on the buyer, be twenty-four, two forty, two forty.
Two forty.
We'll get paid tonight.
I'm sorry, thirty-five eighty-four, so, all right. Just, uh, item number nine, no big deal, we thank everybody that helped for day for day. Everything went pretty smooth, anybody had a hand in it, I think I appreciate it. Item number ten, V F Jeansware has invited mayor, council and clerks to the official name change on May twenty-third at eleven o'clock. Swamp Jones will be served, they would like a head count of everybody that can be there.
And if you want fish, shrimp or chicken?
Yeah, she said to make sure that, try and get that into her, because she's gotta place that order.
She's gotta place the order.
To order the food.
What day now?
Fish.
I love to kill.
Don't.
Fish. That's May the twenty-third, anybody can go.
The Thursday. Thursday and twenty-third.
Some of us do have to go to the job.
That's what time.
Oh, yeah.
We hadn't had the abilities to retire.
So that's on Thursday, ain't it?
Yeah.
See, I'm off on Thursday.
Would any of y'all others, I'll write you down.
I'll, I'll be there, Derek, he works there, dog.
I'll. I'll be there, I don't want fish.
I've got you down. Darren, will you be there?
Yeah, they got.
You'll be there.
Yeah, they got my order already.
All right, Darren, what do you want?
Uh, fish. You be there?
Tramp, if I don't, take the word out of the dog.
Hey, you don't have to worry about that, if he, if he don't show up.
I don't have no place.
Have you, you want me to?
Dog, fish.
I don't know.
You don't want.
I'm not scared, you, Eli.
Hope he don't know.
What are you, Blake?
It's true.
See, if you don't know, eat yours.
I'll let him go in my place.
And that, Con, Contour is the company that.
It's gonna be their name.
They didn't buy them out, but they split, I guess you could say, Vanity Fair and a sports division and a denim division. And Contour will be the denim division, they said everything will stay the same. Walmart is still gonna be their biggest client that they shipped to. Um, hopefully they think this will help them bring on more product, so.
And you spell that K O N T O O R.
K O N T O O R, yep. All right.
We didn't get to.
Looks like I love it.
I didn't know if we had a gravel engraving, so I didn't know where to tell me.
I didn't get a gravel engraving at all, we'll get that back to the board. Made a motion to the chairman.
Yep.
Tabby.
Yep.
Eugene, everyone.
Yep.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.